Thank you for being here this evening. Our regular council meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, September 14th, 2017. We will call this meeting to order. If everyone would please stand for our invocation and pleasure to play. Derek the Father, we thank you for this day and for all that you've done for us. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here and conduct city business. We pray that you would have your hand on each one of us, that we would be able to have wisdom, to think clearly, to be able to make the decisions that are in our community forefront. We again thank you for the opportunity to be here, thank you for being involved in citizenry. And Lord, we just again are so grateful for the great blessings that you have bestowed upon us. All these things we pray in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janet, we have the roll call.
Mayor Lambrue.
Here.
Ms. Baskin-Soul.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Elton.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
City Manager Miller.
Here.
City Attorney Litch.
Here.
Okay, I have a, it's not on the agenda, but I would like to add an item right here between the roll call and the consent agenda. And that would be a proclamation regarding Constitution Week. We have someone who is here from the Daughters of the American Revolution, D.A.R. Please come forward. Now we'll meet you down there. Right. Good deal. Well, thank you for being here. If your name is recently.
Ms. Kora.
Kora, okay. Thank you for being here with us. And I do have a proclamation, and I will read it very quickly. This is in regard to Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2017 marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, whereas public law 901-5 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Brent Lambrue, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of East Ridge in the state of Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of East Ridge to be affixed this 14th day of September of the year of our Lord, 2017. Thank you for being with us. All right. I'll be here to breathe in this comment. It is very neat to go back and read and reread the Constitution. It's something we should all do. We sometimes lose sight of the freedoms that we have and the effort that it took to secure those freedoms. And so I would encourage everyone, if you haven't looked at it recently, go back and take a look at the Constitution. It is a basic document. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda contains the minutes from the August 24th Agenda Work Session, as well as the regular council meeting minutes from August 24th, and a declaration of surplus property.
Motion to approve, but I've got a question about surplus.
Yes, sir.
I noticed they've got two office gen probes, copy fax and scanning machine. Both of them says good working condition. I wondered if any other apartment in the city might have used one or might be needing one. Do you have a put on surplus?
I would like to report that to you, Janet.
That was the list I got from our building maintenance department, so I'm not sure. I can check on it.
Could we remove those two?
Remove those two.
Remove those two from the list. And if it turns out that there is no need for them, we can come back and take care of that. So would you mind admitting your motion to approve the consent agenda with this change?
Yes, sir. I will change my motion to approve the motion with the changes and removing the copy fax and scanning machines.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Baskin-Soul. Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Elton.
Yes.
Mayor Lambrue.
Yes. This council week will provide opportunity for communication from citizens. If you are a resident or a business owner here in the City of East Ridge, and a common question or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so. You can come to one of the two microphones here at the front of the room, state your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes. And we do have two who have signed in. The first is Laura Mathis, 2100 McBrien Road.
Good evening, Council. My name is Laura Mathis, and I'm outside 2100 McBrien Road.
Here.
Okay. Is the button on? I may have accidentally turned it off.
That button?
Yeah.
Okay. Laura Mathis, 2100 McBrien Road. This evening, I just wanted to express some concerns I have with Resolution 2705. I feel like it's being lumped into one big project when it would, if the projects were broken up and voted separately, like a separate resolution to build a field, because every time it seems like we do new projects or build something, that we always come back and have to give more money to complete the project. I'm not comfortable with the fact that the entire council is not included on these decisions. It would be the sole duty of the city manager and the mayor to spend the money as the city will.
There's no money spent in Resolution 2705. There's no money proposed to be spent in Resolution 2705.
There's not an exact dollar figure. There's.
It's a concept.
This is about as vanilla as it gets. This is really approval of a concept that we would like the county to agree with, that we would like the county to vote on as well.
I just, again, would like to see the council be presented with the, if the plan turns into something that does involve tax money or city money, that the entire council gets to vote on it and not just the mayor and yourself.
I can't vote on it.
Okay.
My authority's $10,000, max. That's it by chart. So this is, again, this only includes improvements, enhancements, et cetera, to Camp Jordan. There is no specified certain project, field, facility, or whatever that's being presented in this resolution, nor there is any kind of a monetary appropriation. It's only the concept.
Okay, well, it's a concept. Yeah, it would evolve into a project, correct?
The concept is to team with Hamilton County Board Commissioners to utilize funding from tax generated from the district out there for improvements to Camp Jordan. We have no improvements yet, nor do we have ideas. Everybody has more than one idea. But this council up here has approved no appropriation or have they approved any projects. The concept that we adopt will go along with the county as a partner on this, and hopefully the county will do, say, an approving, and then we'll get along with the county in regard to what we have projects to do.
Okay, and I just wanted to express that there seemed to be a lot of interest in the town center. And I hope that that project is being researched and spec.
It's being pursued.
Okay.
Thank you. The other individual who's signed in is Charles McCullough for 1214 Reeves Avenue.
Look, Mayor Thompson, I'd just like to speak briefly about the town center.
Yes, sir.
One idea that was mentioned just briefly in passing, and I think would be really good for the community, would be a dog park be included in that plan. Because, I mean, it fills the community right now. We can either, you can either drive 10 minutes downtown to the sort of sand park down there, or you can drive 15 minutes out to East Bryant. They're pretty nice up there. But I really think we'd benefit from having one right here at home. A lot of times, if you go to Heritage Park, you know, they have like a regular park and a playground and a dog park. And sometimes we'll go with the dog park, it's the most crowded part there. It sort of draws people, and otherwise it won't be there. And I think it could do something similar for the town center idea. And I just want to say, I'm not the only person that feels this way. I've talked to a lot of people, and they've told me similar things. And I actually have slightly more than 200 signatures from East Ridge residents support that idea.
And that's.
And I'd also like to say that since I think this is as important as it is, if I'll do approve that idea, I'd be willing to commit to fundraising a minimum of $1,000 for that project.
Please, would you hand that to the city court, sir?
Appetition? Thank you very much. Yes, and I think it's, I agree with you. I think it's a great idea, and it is a need in the community to have a dog park here, and this would really be an ideal location. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim Boyd, County Commissioner, District 8. I too wanted to address the Resolution 2705. It's a concept. What I want to make perfectly clear for this council, as Commissioner of District 8, we together, councilwoman, mayor, councilman, myself, we're all elected by the same constituents to represent them to the best of our ability and have a fiduciary responsibility to use their tax dollars in the most prudent, productive, and efficient way we can. In reference to any improvements to Camp Jordan and my support of that, I want to make it very clear that I will be supportive of what the citizens of East Ridge want. And if the citizens of East Ridge feel like the need, the need, press the word "need", is a top priority, designate bonds being issued and dedicate property taxes from the exit one development for a period of a minimum of 15 years. And that's what I'm going to support. On July 20th, I had a community meeting. And I've got a sign and sheet here, and anybody's welcome to look at it. Commissioner, our councilman, Jeff Cangle, attended that, and I appreciate your attendance on that. It was very, very nice of you to do that. The question came up, and in fact, I asked the question in the Q and A section. How many people present are for designating property taxes and a bond issued to pay for improvements at Camp Jordan, whatever those improvements may or may not be? There was no citizens or residents of East Ridge in favor of it at that community meeting. I don't recall any resident being in favor of it. So I implore this council and the mayor to be very, very sensitive to what the citizens may want for the community. And if the council and the mayor bring this to the commission with the support of the citizens of East Ridge, I am going to be 150% supportive of it. I do want to remind this council also that in 2005, Barge Wagner was commissioned to do an extensive study, of which I have concept drawings that I'm willing to share with any council member. In fact, I have a copy I will be leaving with, remember the mayor designates, and can leave it with your recorder or the city manager member. I do have a copy. I met with engineers, and I was reminded of this actually by former mayor Mike Steele. He called me and said, hey, are you aware of the 2005 study? I said, no, I wasn't. So we met with Mike Steele and a couple of the engineers from Barge Wagner, and we spent two hours going over this. And it's a concept. At that time, the emphasis was on soccer and not so much on ball fields, although ball fields are included in this design. What I want to, as this initiative and concept moves forward, I would like to remind the council that there's been an extensive amount of study and work and money spent on studying Camp Jordan. In fact, the engineers reminded me that there are sections of Camp Jordan that you cannot disturb due to Native American burial grounds. I had no idea that they existed down there. In fact, it'd be probably a good idea to remark them as such, and take monitor those burial grounds. But I just want to make sure that as this initiative moves forward, that indeed, tax dollars, revenue, the increased revenue that will be realized through property taxes on the exit one developments as they come online, if we designate those for improvements at Camp Jordan, is that the number one priority of worth of this property taxes to be used? If so, I will be standing and advocating for that. If it's not the wishes of the citizens, I will be hard pressed to support it because I'm elected by them to do their wishes, not my wishes. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Mayor, for giving me this time unannounced.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. One is, how do you intend to determine what the will of the citizenry is?
Well, Mayor, I've got an email address, I've got a telephone, I've got a, my telephone's with me 24/7. My email is in front of me, eight hours a desk in my office. I'm very, very accessible. I would like for this council to tell me that that's what the citizens are wants. The indications I've gotten, and I was talking to several constituents in Friday night's football game, there again, up in the stands, just casually talking about it, I did not get one constituent resident taxpayer of East Ridge in favor of this initiative and this idea. I'm not getting a good feeling, Mayor, that the citizenry, if there's citizens of East Ridge that are for this initiative, I implore them to contact me to balance the discussion.
My experience has been exactly the opposite. I've not had one person come to me and say, that's a dumb idea. We don't like that. I've not had one single individual. We have had a couple that have come here, and the council meetings have said that. But I was checking out at the pharmacy the other day. Didn't know the guy checking the operator thing, but he said, hey, are we really going to do improvements at Camp Jordan? I said, yeah, I think so. I would like to anyway. And he said, well, I think it's a great idea, he'd go for it.
Well, I would just encourage those that are for it, I'm going on record, those that are for it, contact timboyde52@gmail.com, or call me or text me at 423-987-8072. I want to hear from the citizens. I want to be their representative. I want to do what they want to do. And if this is the best thing for East Ridge, absolutely, I'm for it. And I will go further and say that before the end of the month, I will be meeting with a delegation flying in here from out of town. They are one of the top sports complex design, build, manage organizations in the United States. They're flying in here at my request to discuss further the concepts that Barge Wagner has placed in front of me. In fact, we're meeting at Barge Wagner. I took that initiative because Barge Wagner offered it. Certainly, the mayor or any of the council members are welcome to attend that meeting. In fact, I encourage us to meet together and hear what they have to say. The thing that's most intriguing about this particular organization is they bring private dollars to the table to put with public dollars to reduce the tax revenues required to pull off the improvements. Well, I'm interested in hearing that, exactly what that means. So if the mayor, city manager, councilman, if you'd like to be a part of that meeting, certainly I can forward that invite to you and put it on your calendar. I'd love for you to be there.
You don't want us to move it?
I do. I do. I would rather send it to you privately. This is a private meeting, it's not open to the public. Any other questions?
I'll pick it up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you. I can't enforce enough to have the citizens contact me on this to let me know their wills. I will turn this off.
You can just slide it to the agenda here, that would be ideal. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have it up? Okay, I see that. Communication for council. Does that, any other?
Yes, this is coming Saturday. East Ridge Hospital's having a cleanup, and it starts at 8:00 p.m. for the raids, the labs, flowers, we're trying to clean up inside and outside.
And yes, thank you very much. I didn't get a reminder about that yesterday, I think. Thank you for that.
I'd just like to thank what we're saying, the roll call, for making plans about Saturday. And I would also like to thank Mike Andy and his staff for going back after the storm and looking back at some of the dead ends that, but it gives us, you know, a lot of things good we've got, and they've got their path to feet, all that going down, and that's really nice. And another thing I'd like to say, I'd just like to thank, I'm old as a pass last week, and I'd just like to thank everybody, the hearts and well wishes that have been a lot to me. If you lived a good life, and I just appreciate, the family appreciates all the emails and stuff that you send.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. John Tale, Captain Budgy Tale, for opening up his doors for the people coming up here from Florida, offering him free lodging until Friday. So, indeed.
Indeed. I was unfortunately working off last weekend, but my wife and kids stopped in at Jones Memorial for the barbecue, and brought me a plate that was fantastic as usual. And so, thank you to everyone involved in that effort. It is certainly an annual tradition, and goes for a very worthy cause, to purchase coats for privileged children here at East Ridge Schools. So, thank you for everybody who came out to support that. Of course, thank you to Jones Memorial for bringing that in to begin with. Mr. City Attorney.
I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, we will move to new business. There is no old business. Move to regular new business. Item A, Resolution 2694.
In Resolution, City Council and City of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing city manager designated purchase of streets for Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract listing pursuant to Tennessee Committee 12-3-1201B.
All right. And could help but notice the waning voice a little bit there. If you need assistance, because this is a long agenda tonight, if you need me to read some of these, I'll be more than happy to do so. All right, are there any questions, any additional information outside of the board of the top eight?
The type of the engine is a coming. This is on the sports regenerative sweeper that costs $221,973. The rear engine that handles the sweeper is a John Deere, but to power the truck is coming to.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
If I may just add to that, this is going to be, since this has a life expectancy of 15 years, I'm looking to go with the Tennessee municipal vote program on a seven year ago, as we have budgeted for. And I will go ahead and get those papers moving ahead, and then bring that back to the city council by the subsequent meeting.
I would like to know here that this is not lumpy, and I agree with the motion, and due to the fact that it's lumpy, repairs will be done lumpy, so, $2,000 here.
Yes, but being lumpy, it's going to really help us in transportation costs.
All right. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Baskin-Soul.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Elton.
Yes.
Mayor Lambrue.
Yes.
Item B, Resolution 2695.
In Resolution.
If I may just add to that, this is going to be, since this has the life expectancy of fifteen years, I'm looking to go with the Tennessee municipal road program, launched seven years ago, as we have budgeted for, and I will go ahead and get those papers moving ahead, and then bring that back to the city council by the subsequent meeting.
I would like to know here that this is not a low bid, that I agree with the motion on it due to the fact that it's local, the power's gonna be done local, so, not two-thousand dollars here.
Yes, but being local, it's gonna really help us in transportation costs.
All right, anything else? Motion, please.
Ask for your soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton, yes, Mayor Lamey?
Yes. Item B, Resolution 2695.
A resolution, city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing city managers designated to purchase two-thousand-eighteen Ford Explorer to the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract listing pursuant to Tennessee Code into twelve dash three dash twelve oh one B.
Do we have a motion in regard to Resolution 2695?
What motion, what question?
Here we have a motion, we have a second.
Question.
Okay.
Why are we paying five dollars for drive-out tanks?
Paying the item of issue, drive-out tanks. Mr. Justin, do you have any?
I ain't wanting to pay him about halfway down, five dollars fifty cents for beer.
I can always call for an emergency room and ask him to take that five dollars off.
I'm not speaking at a dollar.
Yeah.
I'm looking.
I can call Jason in the morning, if you would allow me to.
What should I call this one, what, is this one of the fire department?
This is for the fire inspector that works in the community development department under Kenny, Custer. Our disposition came on board just a month ago, with the budget.
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago, to build the. Actually, I think what we're doing on this one is, is we're doing a switch, I think Kenny's getting this car, and correct me if I'm wrong, and your tech, and your city truck that you have, and that's going to the fire inspector, is that still your plan?
The, this four utility vehicle we found, might shock, we go to the building official.
Okay, building official, okay.
Okay, so, considering there is a question of the drive-out tank.
I want to help that.
Okay, my suggestion would be, if we could amend our motion in second, to, to say that we will go with... Trying to think of the best way to phrase that, maybe that it would not exceed thirty-thousand-nine-fifty-two-eighty-three? Was that the, that was the cost?
Or we could get drive-out tags along with those cars, or buy a tape.
He wasn't listed on the county's government, it was listed on the board, four trucks coming from Marversburg, Paul.
They'll hate for us to technically approve spending a, you know, X dollar amount, and then if the five dollars and fifty cents gets pulled off of it, then technically, it's not what we moved on.
Not to exceed thirty-thousand-nine-fifty-two-eighty-three?
I think that would be.
Not to exceed.
But I think that would be the wisest path forward.
Not to exceed four?
Not to exceed thirty-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty-two dollars eighty-three cents.
Okay, the motion.
Okay, Mr. Kay?
Please.
Okay. Mr. Sully, you had a question as well?
I've, I've, I've asked questions, I've always given also to the fire department.
That's next, Mr. Hilton.
Okay. There are no other questions, if the roll call, please.
Ask for your soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton, yes, Mayor Lamey?
Yes. Item is approved, item C, Resolution 2696.
A resolution, city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated purchaser, four utility vehicles for the fire department, to the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract listing pursuant to Tennessee Code into twelve dash three dash twelve oh one B.
Motion approved, not to exceed thirty-thousand-seventy-eight dollars?
Second.
Question.
What color is this vehicle, please, white, red?
It says white.
It says white, not, why we keep getting white vehicles from the fire department?
Like, look, red.
Bill's dropped.
This is, uh...
White, white.
We're gonna have white and red, white.
That's right.
Do we have a motion, sorry, do we have a second?
I have a motion.
Right, did we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay, roll call, please.
Ask for your soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton, yes, Mayor Lamey?
Yes. Item is approved, item D, Resolution 2697.
A resolution, city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated purchaser, six Dodge Charger pursuit vehicles, to the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract listing pursuant to Tennessee Code into twelve dash three dash twelve oh one B.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, yes, sir, what is your question?
All right, are we gonna take advantage of the pay discount four percent?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, that's, that's part of it, yes.
Okay. Page four or five, the description, with East Ridge police equipment package for twenty-sixteen Chargers, we give sixteen or eight tens?
Sixten or four?
Twenty-sixteen here.
Sixten or four?
Sixten?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, can you, I didn't see no line item on the six thousand dollars worth of police equipment, getting with it? You know, I bought a lot of radio, I mean, uh...
Yeah, our equipment.
I just like, how much come to the six thousand dollars?
Six thousand dollars includes the screen, all the lights, the side ring, the side ring controller, the console, flashlights.
Flashlights, okay.
That's all installed as well. And the graphics back.
Yeah, that's different.
That's fine.
Mine's a seven-three dollars.
Yeah, that, that comes in, basically comes with cars, well, all that together, but they get the cost here, and reason why we don't have to drive out a tax, because they deliver.
It's gonna be five cars, or just lots?
Uh, four will be light bar cars, two will be, uh, slip dogs.
Traffickers will be the slip dogs.
They're gonna be shooting the six thousand?
No, so they'll have additional lights when they get them to meet the standards of the meeting.
Are there any other questions? We do have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ask for your soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton, yes, Mayor Lamey?
Yes. Item is approved, item D, Resolution 2698.
A resolution, city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving a bid for SCBA airbags and spare bottles for the East Ridge Fire Rescue Department.
Mayor and councilman, we, we sent bids out for this pile of the airbags and the spare bottles. With that, we received two simple bids, one was from EBS, Emergency Vehicle Services, and the other was from, uh, from, from your site, uh, I'm sorry, Emergency Vehicle Specialist, and the other was from, uh, from your site, uh, Emergency Vehicle Services Specialist were the low bid, fifteen thousand two eighty-nine oh six. Both bids were in comparison, and both bids were with the, with the companies. I would recommend the council, the mayor, accept this low bid purchase from EBS for fifty-eight thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars and six cents for airbags and bottles.
This is the second or third year of our replacement program?
This, this is the complete year for our airbags, this finishes that, uh, changeover of making everything, uh, functional and meeting standard, and we've got models that are going out as of January of this coming year, so we'll make sure that we have a plan in place to replace all of that project.
All right, very good.
Motion approved, question?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, second, yes, sir.
Friday, Mr. Williams, remember, not assuming the airbags come with bottles?
No, surely not, uh, only the first understanding, first understanding they did, that's why we went with eighteen bottles on this. So what you do is you have a model for an airbag now, plus you have a spare bottle.
Then our, our resolution reads, nine airbags and nine bottles.
Okay.
Change it to eighteen bottles.
That's correct, that should be changed, eighteen bottles, thank you, very much, Councilman Kay.
All right, do we have any other questions?
Can you check my motion?
Uh, you can't, I'm just clarifying for the record, yes, sir.
They can change his motion to nine airbags, with like, ten bottles instead of nine spare bottles.
Okay, Miss Hill, okay with that, three seconds, okay. All right, any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ask for your soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton, yes, Mayor Lamey?
Yes. Item is approved, item F, Resolution 2699.
A resolution, city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated purchaser, nine portable radios for the East Ridge Fire Rescue Department, to the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract list, pursuant to Tennessee Code into twelve dash three dash twelve oh one B.
Motion approved, second. Yeah, we have a motion to approve and a second, are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Ask for your soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton, yes, Mayor Lamey?
Yes. That item is approved, item G, Resolution 2700.
A resolution, city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated purchaser, twelve portable radios for the East Ridge Police Department, to the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract listing pursuant to Tennessee Code into twelve dash three dash twelve oh one B.
Motion approved. We have a motion and a second to approve, are there any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ask for your soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton, yes, Mayor Lamey?
Yes. That item is approved, next item, item H, Resolution 2701.
A resolution, city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated purchaser, six stock radio units, to the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract listing pursuant to Tennessee Code into twelve dash three dash twelve oh one B.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Ask for your soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton, yes, Mayor Lamey?
Yes. Item is approved, next item is item I, Resolution 2702.
A resolution, city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated purchaser, six in-car video units, to the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract listing pursuant to Tennessee Code into twelve dash two dash twelve oh one B.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes, sir.
You ready, in-car radios instead of in-car video?
I'm sorry, it is video.
Yes, sir.
I know you already got that.
Yes, sir, motion. Okay, are there any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Motion to approve.
Oh, we had, had a motion from Miss Hill?
I have a second.
Second, okay. Are there any other comments? Roll call, please.
Ask for your soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton, yes, Mayor Lamey?
Yes. That item is approved, item, item J, Resolution 2703.
A resolution, city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated purchaser, five Panasonic in-car laptop computers, to the National International Purchasing Alliance.
Motion approved.
Second, any question?
Okay, we have a, a second, for, take your pick.
Just a second, a question.
Okay.
I, he, he buy five Panasonic, buy a laptop, buy six computer mounts, we got six cars, I'm buying one of the six cars?
I've got a spare one.
You got a spare one, okay. It's one of them of the few.
And, and you have to remember, too, the spare one, I'm holding back, um, these cars, when they're cycled in, some of these guys have computers already, so what we're doing is bringing five on, and I have a second spare, because this series, as you brought up the last time, but I have a computer in the car, this is the last of these series of computers. Next year, we're gonna have to look at changing computers. So, that's where we're gonna try, I have a second spare, just in case.
So, next year, we're going to get all the computers?
No, 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 we're gonna cycle it in over a period of two or three years. I do not have the dollars to be able to do a one-time shot.
The CF-53 that we're using now, it's at its end of life, the new, new computer, the CF-54 takes over from this one on, that's what I'm saying. So, we can't get any CF-53s anymore.
Well, if we're, if we're gonna cycle them in, by the time we get the last cycle in, is that the future going to happen?
No, because generally Panasonic runs in about a seven to eight-year lifecycle on these, uh, tablets. If we came in, if you remember, three years ago now.
We're gonna be looking at the, can pass computer screens?
We're, we're gonna compare that, do some comparisons between when you purchase the mounts, when you purchase the wireless, when you purchase a computer, to see how that offsets. We might, that's the reason I said we may come back to you with that idea.
Well, it sounds good for the safety, we don't have anything stuck in front of us.
Well, yeah, and any pollution controls will be on there, sure.
All right, so we do already have a motion and a second, do we have any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ask for your soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton, yes, Mayor Lamey?
Yes. Is approved, next item, Resolution 2704.
A resolution, city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated purchaser, six Havasin Car computer mounts, to the National International Purchasing Alliance.
Motion approved.
Second.
There are kind of questions to get, why, why can't we put, I mean, it's our government, why the future turns up, we'll buy computer mounts, split it together on the motion stuff?
One of the reasons is, councilman, is we don't necessarily use the same computer mount that the digital offers.
This will be all over.
Now, on this material, we're getting this from CDWG, and we're staying uniform with our mounts, that way, if we do run into this problem like we discussed on computers, the only thing we have to basically change is the top mount where the computer sits, we keep the base. So if we get some more dodges, we can rotate those bottoms off. But we're replacing chivalries as we go, and the bottom's gonna fit with the tops, so.
All right, so there is a motion and a second, are there any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ask for your soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Mayor Lamey?
Yes. Thank you, council. Thank you. That item is approved. Item L, Resolution 270... Item L, Resolution two seven zero five.
A resolution, City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the development of new improvements, renovations, enhancements of recreational tourism facilities for Camp Jordan Park to increase tourism and to accompany and benefit the extraordinary retail tourism facilities in the border of retail tourism development district located in City of East Ridge in Hamilton County by designated city property taxes for the lands within Jordan Crossing development for such improvements, enhancements, and authorizing the mayor and city manager to take all action for carbon development set development improvements, enhancements which include, but are not limited to, direct and indirect financial assistance and all other appropriate and necessary matters of city or the industrial development board of City of East Ridge.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna be upfront with you now, I'm fucking nervous thing, because I just don't think we need to get a tip tax to take any of our property taxes away from the Jordan Crossing thing down there to put in Camp Jordan Park. The whole idea of that dinner again with was to build our Polish department with excess, excess tax money, our fire department, sanitation department, let the whole city grow off of the increased property taxes off of that down there. If we want to do something, let's put it right up here into this town center thing we've been talking about, and a lot of citizens are on board with that, and I just, just can't vote for that.
All right. Thank you for being upfront. Do we have any other questions?
All right, well, like I said, this is a concept we're about to own, no money fixed this, there's no active plans yet, it's just going on, City of County will go along with us. There's improvements that needs to be done, we need to get restrooms, and I hear all kinds of complaints about that. So I, you know, that's, like I said, we, it's just a concept, this is not spending any money right now. You'll have to come back before this council to spend any money. So, we'll have problems, well, on the concept.
I think ultimately, what this does, and the wording is such, that, you know, our, our spending of money in regard to this resolution is gonna be contingent upon what the county decides to do. That doesn't mean we can't come back later if the county says no. We can come back and say, okay, well, we're gonna do a little something down there. What this is doing is basically saying for every dollar we put into Camp Jordan, Hamilton County will give that stat.
I think, I think it's a responsible way to do this.
And there are, I don't think there's any doubt that there, there is a need for renovation upgrades in certain areas. It's a great park, it is the major draw to East Ridge. No, no question. Can it be better? Absolutely, it can be better. I know, I don't wanna put it on the spot, but, you know, back in twenty twelve, now, we sat in your office down at Camp Jordan Bridge and talked about what can we do? At that point, it's really not a funding stream. Potentially, there is at least a partial stream. So, you know, I, I want to, to see what, you know, if the county is willing to, to be our partner in this. If they say no, certainly, that's their right, they, they can say no. But it, it ultimately would benefit not just East Ridge, but I think it most certainly would, would benefit the entire Hamilton County area, just the, the influx of people that, that we can see.
I agree with some of the up, up trades we dig down there, I just can't see us allocating these tip tax down there. Fix it as we can afford it.
In essence, that's what we're trying to do already.
No, we're trying to get the county involved.
Well, then, the, the money, I mean, we're not gonna be able, if we were to... If the current, what is, what is in Jordan Crossing currently, it produces X amount of dollars per year in property taxes. And we're not gonna go out and, and borrow two times X in order to, to make the improvements. We're going to do whatever it is that we can do based on the development that is there. We're not going way out on a limb. And this is, this is saying, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna use what's already there to support our effort. And if the county is willing, again, to, to go in, have these with us, then that's, that's a wonderful thing.
I don't check that off.
How much tax do we collect off of what's down there now?
Hundred ten thousand dollars. But shit, that's, that's pass pro. We do not have, we do not know yet what we'll get from the restaurant door, or hotel, so it's not aligning.
But right now, we, we passed this, or we passed it, future tax number?
No, 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 this number, ten. Second page, second paragraph, where the City Council deems approval of the development of new improvements, enhancements in, in Camp Jordan Park based on the property taxes at the time the city incurs an eddies. This could be done in stages, it's not done all at once. Have additional buildings come on, then we have the opportunity to get with the county and do additional enhancements or improvements to the park. So let's say in two thousand and eighteen, I may be switching that a little bit, but let's say, usually, your, your buildings, you don't get taxes on buildings until they're put on tax rolls, January first. But let's say that hotel comes on line January first, and the restaurant comes on line January first. What property taxes have to be generated from the restaurant, the hotel, and pass pro, what the city and county would be, and what we could bond at that time that could be faced with? And then when further development occurs, we could bond again.
Another thing Jack didn't say a while ago about details, and I know we're looking into that, and that's something I, I'd like to see get started also before I get off the scales of the sales.
Again, again, the, the council can be done in, in a, in a, in a phased development too, it doesn't all have to be done at once.
I can't, Jordan was just really done in phases. We have all these, we have, we have.
We had one, one spot at a time, for those of you that have been here a while, there will be an extract down there for a while.
And the Hamilton County delegation allocated funds to help with that, I was reading back on history, they helped us.
Just to play around with figures, you were looking at generating about a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in property taxes, with both the city and county doubling that. One seventy-five now comes, double that. You'd be, you'd possibly be looking at this, being able to bond out for twenty years, be separated from seven eight million dollars.
All right, so, so you're talking about, I'm saying that, or?
I'm, I'm just basically giving you numbers.
My, my understanding is that you're basically?
Yeah, what, what, what projects that you decide on doing and the cost, it would have to be worked out. This is only just the concept going, so we can get the county on board, and we can, or partnership.
I understand five thousand dollars would be a good amount of payment on our area of, our, we're gonna have to.
Area platform, a hundred-foot area platform's gonna be what, like, he's going, about two and a half billion dollars.
Yeah.
And they have, they used to have yours. I understand that, I know, I know. But again, we're not talking specific projects, and I'm not talking about, about the Dolberg appropriation at this time, looking at it. Well, you, you gotta get the concept first, I mean, the county isn't going to turn around and join the city of East Ridge unless we do something first. It's our park, it's in our city. So by us adopting this, we are showing the county, we're behind this concept, would you join in with us? Once this is adopted by us, the county then will look at it, and if they adopt it, believe me, I think the county's gonna have just as much say as to, if they are, if they're putting fifty percent of the cost, I can believe that the county's gonna wanna have some say in what improvements we do out there.
Is it that or what? All right, well... Again, at this point, this resolution adopts the concept that can be passed on to the county for their approval or rejection. That's where we're at. Jen, if we could have the roll call, please.
Ms. Beersville?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Cagle?
No.
Councilmember Hilton, yes, Mary Lane?
Yes. Item is approved. Next item, item M, Resolution two seven zero six.
A resolution, City Council, City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the application for acceptance of Tennessee Department of Transportation's two thousand seventeen transportation alternative grant phase three, pin number one two five one seven eight, and approving the combination of this grant for phase one project, which was the multi, multimodal pin, number one one, one two two zero zero zero, for phase two project, the tap grant, pin number one two one five zero nine point zero one.
Actually, there should be a correction to that, since we already have applied for this grant and have accepted it. This is basically just combining the two tap projects that we have, which is phase one and phase three, as well as the multimodal, which was phase two, or actually, maybe the other way around, I think we got multimodal first, then the first tap, then the second tap. So that takes a sidewalk project from McBride Road going west all the way up to Kingwood Drive. And it would be under one contract. Also, the benefits of coming, combining these contracts are the way that we're gonna be able to get reimbursements. Currently, with the multimodal, we get a ninety-five five, which means the state puts a ninety-five percent, and we get a five percent. So with the tap grants, the first three phases, neither design and right-of-way are responsibility of the city, and then eighty and twenty percent of the construction. The way this will go now is that pretty much everything will be ninety-five five all the way through, so we can go back and get reimbursements from the state. And then, the construction, there'll be a portion of it that will be eighty, twenty. So it's more a benefit from the state financially to combine these three projects.
If you look at the last page in the agenda packet, very last page, you will see a, a, not this item, the very last page of your book, the very last page of your book, you'll see a map. That pretty well outlines starting with McBride, Tomris is tap. Tomris, the Bellboard, or John Ross is the multimodal, and the one that, that Amanda has been discussing goes from Bellboard, John Ross, to Liberty, uh, Kingwood. So we're gonna combine all of those three together. And then to kinda take it a little bit a step further, add the state in doing tap, or phase three tap between Bellboard and Liberty, on, is a map. They have conditioned that to say we need to do a survey and a, and a drainage study from the tunnels to Liberty Lane, Kingwood Drive. That's has to, that's gonna be part of this with, agreeing with ASA, that's gonna be, and kind of flapping them together. There's a hundred and sixty-six foot drop from the tunnels to Marlboro, we did a hundred and sixty-six foot drop. And the state's concerned as, as well as I am, that we provide for a system that is properly sized, and that we have specific points of discharge coming from that, from one distance to another, from that, from that line of distance that we're looking at. So, that's what they're just gonna be doing. So we get to M, and looking at A, ASA for engineering services. We're looking at doing phase three tap between Bellboard and Kingwood, along with the drainage study and survey.
It's actually the national, it's our.
Yes. It's, it's ours, but it has to be part of it.
It does, yes.
They wanna make sure that, that sizing of the pipe is correct going from the top of the hill all the way down, or have discharge points in either under drainage systems, or around retention, or retention costs.
Does we have?
We have to be able, we have to be able to control that one.
We do have some issues that we do know of, that are especially around the Marlboro area for flash flooding. And then once you also get into the, near the end of the, this new tap grant, you've also got some flash flooding issues around the food city that come around there. So they do want to make sure that this is, really, it's continuity is what we're looking for. And also, when we do get to N, because ASI engineering was the engineer for both the first two phases, they said that they would also be the engineer for the third phase. So this, the N would be, N would memorialize that. So we didn't have to go through the whole process of selecting a different engineer because of the continuity issue. So we wanted to make sure everything looked the same, it had the same version of the grant, that we understood what was needed for the grants, as well as what's needed for the west project for East Ridge.
It's three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, is that the match we have to do for all three grants, or is that for one?
All right, which part are you talking about, and are you talking about the budget?
We have both results, City of East Ridge, matching fund up to three hundred and eighty thousand.
That's about the total, I had to do some crazy math yesterday trying to make sure the ninety-five five was in the eighty, twenty match. But from what I can understand, it was about approximately total for the entire three phases, that would about be what our match was total.
Right, what is total money, it will, it will be ten thousand, billion?
Oh, it's well over a million, just one of the construction phases is one point six million. So it's almost close to, I think, a two hundred million, I think.
For all three?
Two million, yes. Sorry, I have to carry away with my zeros, but it's close to a two billion project.
We would do a three hundred and eighty thousand.
Just a very big margin, considering that originally, if we had these separately, we would be on hook for a whole lot more money.
And we're getting a little bit more money because of combining them, I thought we figured we had a hundred and thirty thousand dollars more.
Yeah, they, they did.
Total projects, three of them together, bundling them.
It looked like they had added some more money from the state, which was good. Because they did come back and ask us if we had any, what it would take to combine the projects, and we did get a good budget figure, and they took those numbers, so that was the additional money.
Okay. So in regard to Resolution two seven zero six, is there a motion?
Question temporary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Beersville?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, Mary Lane?
Yes. Item is approved, next item, Resolution two seven zero seven.
A resolution, City Council, City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor or his designated manager to an agreement with ASI Engineering for engineering services with regard to transportation alternatives program highway forty-one corridor enhancement project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, are there any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Beersville?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton, yes, Mary Lane?
Yes. Item is approved as well.
Thank you, your Cagle.
Thank you. Resolution two seven zero eight.
An initial resolution authorizing the occurrence. An initial resolution authorizing the occurrence of indebtedness by City of East Ridge, Tennessee, amount not to exceed four million, four million ninety thousand by the execution of loan agreement with the Public Building Authority of the City of Clarksville, Tennessee, to provide funding for a public works project and to fund the incidental necessary expenses required for it to.
No, the first question you're going to ask is what I asked, is actually doing loan with City of Clarksville, Tennessee. Well, the Tennessee Municipal Loan Program has what is established, it's a public building authority and with the City of Clarksville PBA, which is called Public Building Authority Act, is a conduit issuer in matters like this. So this would be a twenty-year loan, four point nine million dollars. The breakdown is kind of in the middle of the packet, it shows the grants and appropriation dollars we have, expenditures we have assigned, and the shortfall that we do have. The monies that we have as of today is about two million, two hundred and eight thousand, fifty dollars. Total expenditures, which would include some hard costs and soft, soft costs, soft costs. But the large one being the bid to CLB Matthews, the amount of five million, seven fifty-three, three sixty-five, which is the construction cost. This is, take that gives the total expenditures of six point eight, nine six million. We have a shortfall of four point six, eight eight million. Whenever you're dealing with moving large massive areas of dirt, one area to another, digging and so forth, you don't know what you're going to get, so I've added about four, four percent, four point five percent to see in there to be added to the shortfall. That's how I come up with the amount of four point nine million dollars. This be for, again, for a period of twenty years. The cost of issuance is twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars, that's included in four point nine million dollar amount. Rate of interest over twenty, twenty years, two point five, five percent. And the mean annual debt equates to about three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and four dollars, fifty-seven cents. So in essence, what you're looking at is this will be paid for from the border region sales tax. Right now, the city receives one point two five million, it's what we received in two thousand sixteen. We will find out between now and the end of September, how much we, it's in the September, right? End of September, how much we're going to get for the year two thousand seventeen. It's going to be more than that, I just hope it's awful. And that will grow over the next twenty years, between now and two thousand forty, two thousand forty-two. But we will get one point two five million, just for education purposes. Four hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred appropriation, we give to Exit One every year. So the three hundred and fifteen thousand will come off of that. So basically, the difference that we have there, seven, seven million plus from, it's about four or five million dollars left right now to be able to find out. You have it for you, O, is the initial resolution authorizing the occurrence of this debt. The next, Resolution P, Resolution Number 2709, authorizes the loan pursuant to the loan agreement. So both of these are separate actions, they need separate loans. And now, what's this done, it's all to the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. They turn out a fifteen-day period upon the approval of this, which is called the waiting period. It's a time for any kind of, any person who wants to apply an appeal. And then the funds will be released to us sometime in, say, beginning of first, first, second week in October.
You're waiting to withstand twenty-six eighty-two resolution?
What's twenty-six eighty-two?
Before we approve, do we go through Tennessee bond subvention?
You are going to do, if this is going through the bonds, so this is, this is what we do.
But let's go through Clarksville.
That, that they use Clarksville as their PBA, their public building authority goes through Clarksville. That's, I've always done bond, I've probably done a dozen and a half of these only years, and I've always gone through investment banker and a, and a escort advisor, financial advisor. Unfortunately, when you go that route, it's usually, it's usually two percent of the bond, bond amount that you're looking at. So usually, we'd be looking at a hundred thousand dollar payment. And now I'm getting this to twenty-nine-four, that's why it's nice to go through the. If they don't consider this, the revenue commissioner does not consider this a bond issue. He considers this, he considers this a loan because it's going through a public building authority and that's how the loans are done through Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. It's all been an educational process for me, but that's how it works.
I don't remember what it was, but some years ago, we, we had to go through Clarksville. We had to for something, and I don't remember what it was, they had made. But recollection, I don't remember.
We converted long term, longer term to shorter term, had to go through that.
It could have been.
It has been since I've been on.
Yeah, it, yeah, it could very well have been.
All right, well, we have our explanation as to why the City of Clarksville is in, is mentioned in this resolution. Do we have a motion in regard to twenty-seven oh eight?
It's approved.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Richelieu?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, Mary Lane.
Yes. Item is approved, next item is P, Resolution 2709.
A resolution authorizing a loan pursuant to a loan agreement between City of East Ridge, Tennessee, and the Public Building Authority of the City of Clarksville, Tennessee, in the principal amount from not to exceed four point nine million, authorizing the execution of such loan agreement and other documents related to said loan, approving the issuance of the bond by such public building authority, providing for the application proceeds of said loan, payment of such indebtedness, consenting to the assignment of the city's obligation under such loan agreement and certain other matters.
Motion first. We have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any comments or questions?
This is Site four one nine.
Yes, sir. Yes, absolutely, you can see on the page there, four point nine issuance. Roll call, please.
Ms. Richelieu?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, Mary Lane.
Yes, item is approved. The next item is Q, Grant Consent Agenda with Resolution 2710 and Resolution 2711.
A resolution, the City Council, City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the City of East Ridge to participate in the TML Risk Management Pool, Rites of Safety, Loss Control, Matching Grant Program, and a resolution to support and commitment the City of East Ridge to apply for fiscal year two thousand eighteen Tennessee Department of Transportation Transportation Alternative Programs Grant for Ringel Road Pedestrian Improvement Project Phase Four.
You just note on Phase Four, on two, this is going to be the grant that we talked about earlier in the public hearing in five thirty. This is the one that goes from McBryan to Maxwell, thank you. We have a motion to approve the Grant Consent Agenda, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Richelieu?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, Mary Lane.
Yes. Item is approved. Our final item is item R, a discussion of engineering services for design and construction inspection on Ringel Road, Liberty West to South Seminole. Hey, I alluded to this when we were talking about M and N in regard to the TAP grants. This is the phase that will go from Penguin, Liberty to South Seminole, the tunnels. This is what I would be paying for from the border region sales tax dollars. And you're probably looking at what we have spent on the others, including drainage, probably five hundred dollars total on this project. Right now, what I'm looking at is to do the design and the CDI services. You're going to have to go through TNOT rules and regulations and all their NECA documents and all that bit because we are funding this with local funds, not state and or federal funds. So we are going to be looking, since we're talking about areas along Ringel Road, especially on the north and south side of Penguin, where it's going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to do ten-foot sidewalks. We don't have to do ten-foot sidewalks, we're funding it, we can do four or five-foot sidewalks up there. So we may have to narrow it down so that we don't start taking away necessarily the parking for those businesses that exist in there today. ASAP will be performing the survey work and drainage work because that work has to be done for the Phase Two TAP between Liberty and Bellmore. So what I'm looking at here, should the council agree with the recommendation that I have in, in continuing a engineering relationship, a basic engineering to do the design of CDI services for that section from Liberty Lane, Penguin to South Seminole. If you are okay with that, then I will get a proposal from AS Engineering to bring it back to the city council.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? I, for one, would be in favor. I think, once we start seeing the sidewalks going in, it's going to be a stark difference between what we have now and what we will have. And I think continuing that along the west end of Ringel Road would be very important for future development in that area.
Okay. Councilmember Cagle? Any thoughts?
Yes, money class.
Right now, right now, I'm going with just, just I know, I know. It's, it's going to come down and it is going to be a, an issue that the city council is going to have to look at in light of the fact that we've got two projects that are bonded out now. One is going to carry a cost of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. And then a twelve-year capital note that we have on Camp Jordan Parkway, which carries, say, an annual debt service of about seventy-two million dollars, seventy-two thousand dollars, I'm sorry, seventy-two thousand dollars.
Diane needs to be resuscitated over there.
She doesn't want to talk.
You understand about, for me?
We're looking at, we're looking, yes, we're looking at getting very close there. So I'm very interested in seeing what amount we get for two thousand seventeen for our border region for the next couple of weeks. And then I'm going to have to have a work session, study session, is to sit down, I have the projects that the council has talked to me about. This includes improvements to Camp Jordan, it includes Town Center, it includes the landscaping for Exit One. Unfortunately, they all have a cost to it. And that cost is going to exceed that one point two million. So we're going to have to come up with, the council's going to have to come up with some decisions on how we want to do this spacing or whatever to be able to. Now, remember too, we want to be able to utilize the border region sales tax dollars to the year two thousand forty-two, most of them came. So if you're looking at what we get from two thousand seventeen, I don't know what that amount is, but I can forecast out for that six, that's twenty years, what we think we might get. We don't want to have all our projects paid off by year two thousand thirty-two or thirty-four. We want to take it out as far as we can to take advantage of two thousand forty-two.
And two, that one, one point two million is impacted by things like the, 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 or not added in yet. That will be as new businesses come to town, that one point two grows. So potentially, we have.
Thing, Sarah's big most about these constructions right here is the fact that I know what the drainage is up here, coming down Ringel Road.
Right.
Those old boral's got a problem over there now.
Yes.
I think these great banks over here's got.
They do.
They've got a problem over with the drainage. If we correct the problem, they're going to end up raining, we go to Washington, people will leave. So we're going to have to come from up there all the way down.
What we're going to have, but what, just, just temporarily working out, you bring Jeff up here and we can give you a one-on-one on drainage. We are also going to have to, other than sizing the pipe coming from South Seminole down to Tombrus, we're also going to have to have points of discharge, we can't take all that water down here and expect to take care of it down in the road. We have got to find places that we're going to have to acquire property and look at some kind of retention or retention to be able to take that water off. It can't all go through the pipes and end up being coming out of Marlboro and between Marlboro and Tombrus, that isn't going to work. And Jeff and I have kind of driven up and down, he said, well, here's a point of discharge we can look at. Maybe a little bit of point of discharge here where we can hold that water dissipating in the ground easier on a, on a, on a period of time. So throw it all into one point, which would be unfortunately the bad luck station, which almost goes underwater by the time we have any rain.
You know where, John Ross?
Yes.
How that ditch comes under where Preal's building used to be, that ditch comes straight under his building. Straight into the drugstore and.
We have a couple of.
It's far somewhere right in behind there and.
That all was going to happen.
From the stove, goes up to a big wide spot down there.
I like that with the stool, I have a photograph of it.
Yeah, this, Jeff, like says, look at that all and that will all be included in this drainage study that he's, he's looking at. We're aware of, he's, he's walked all that. So we're, we're very well aware of that. It has to be addressed.
It's been fairly that we don't talk about. It's going to have to be scuffed, put it there, walk through.
Correct. You're correct.
A potential added benefit of this, not, not only, I mean, ultimately, could we have sidewalks on that end of Ringel Road, but perhaps as we go, we, we make the drainage issue much, much better for everyone from Wimberly on up or potentially further down even.
Absolutely. That's what, that's what, that's what we're looking to do and that's, that's why I'm saying that that probably carried a cost of four or five million because you're talking about drainage. And, and, and some acquisition of properties to be able, of points of discharge.
Potentially, we make it better than it is right now. So it's a net gain for all those businesses in that area.
Some of these properties you're talking about, like the city has a market, that's something we can, we can ground type level. Put marble top there.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. You're doing green area, absolutely. All right. Any other comments or questions? Well, that's all that we have on our agenda tonight. Not that that wasn't enough. But thank you all for being here tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.